Okay.
I know I got my.
Not even.
I realize I brought it in.
I'm afraid someone's gonna ask to reference the minutes from.
Call meeting door. To have been followed, we thank you this day and city in which we live, God, us this evening as we make our decisions. Christ.
Amen.
This is the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of the Noonan City Council. You have the minutes from the special call meeting of May the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two before you. I'll entertain a motion. We adopt those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. You also have before you the minutes of the regular meeting of May the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion. We adopt those.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. We have several appointments to boards and commissions this evening. The first one is replacement of Bart Enson, who I'm gonna need to replace. So if you'll put that on our next agenda, Mr. Phillips. The next is Noonan Youth Activities and Ms. Lily Smith, and she would like to serve again. I would ask to reappoint her.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. And the next is a resignation from Madeline Barrow from the Noonan Youth Activities Committee. Is there a motion to accept with regret her letter of resignation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carried. The next is an appointment to the Convention Center Authority, John Goodrum. I would like to reappoint Mr. Goodrum.
Second.
Motion is second. We reappoint Mr. Goodrum to the Convention Center Authority. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Thank you. The next, Mr. Schell is.
I'd like to reappoint Michael Colpoys.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. We reappoint Michael Colpoys to the Convention Center Authority. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Mr. Alexander.
Next, next agenda, sir.
All right. Thank you. The next is is also mine. Mr. Craig Ruby has decided not to spend another term on the Cultural Arts Commission, and I'd like to to appoint in his place Ashley Nelson.
Sir. Second.
Motion is second. We appoint Ashley Nelson to the Cultural Arts Commission for a three-year term. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carried. The next, Mr. DeBose is not here this evening. If you'll put that on the next agenda. Ms. Jenkins, obviously, he's not here this evening. Next agenda. Mr. Schell.
Would you put this one on the next agenda?
I will do that, please. Thank you. The next, Mr. Alexander.
Yes, Ms. Vassal West. She's moving to Houston, so if we could write her a letter and thank her. And next, next agenda, mayor.
So the next is also yours, keeping it beautiful.
Yes, sir. I'd like to renominate Ms. Alicia Bohannon.
Second.
Motion is second. We renominate Ms. Alicia Bohannon, keeping it beautiful for a three-year term. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Mr. DeBose, again, next agenda, please, and Mr. Schell, the final one.
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Emmy Van Patten.
Second.
Keep me in a beautiful.
All right. We have a motion is second to reappoint Emmy Van Patten to keep noon and beautiful for a three-year term. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda this evening under City Manager is consideration of adoption of an updated pay classification plan and mid-year twenty twenty-two budget amendment. Mr. Phillips, sorry, you this evening.
Very well, Mayor, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be before you today to present a mid-year, which is an unusual situation for us. Budget amendment, but also a pay, and the purpose for the budget amendment is the pay plan adjustment. As we have previously talked, you know, with today's market, we are running into some recruiting and retainment issues in certain positions in the city. We've had that conversation previously with council. I know it's council's vision to recruit and retain and provide myself and our management team with the resources to be able to hire the best to provide high-quality services to our constituents. So we've been working really close with the management team and went through a whole process where we've basically revamped our entire pay system. We reviewed job descriptions. We moved classifications. We compared responsibilities to market conditions of similar jobs outside the city, other jurisdictions. So it was a pretty exhaustive effort, and we turned it around very, very quickly. So what you have in front of you today are two items that are going to need two separate actions. The first action is a resolution that will consider adoption of the new pay plan. And what the pay plans are, we have a general pay plan for our general employees. We have a police pay plan, obviously, for the police officers. And then we have a separate pay plan for the fire department employees. But however, all we have to do is have one motion for the adoption of the resolutions, which references all three of those pay plans. The second action item will be actually an ordinance that will consider an amendment to the twenty twenty-two budget. The ordinance is in your packet. The ordinance exhibit actually amends the general fund, the sanitation enterprise fund, and our NSP program. So we have employees that have salaries that are charged to each of those funds. This particular budget amendment addresses not only the wages, but the necessary FICA and the necessary pension contributions that will be impacted by the pay adjustment. If you look inside your budget amendment, the total impact to the general fund, and this is just a little over a half-year budget amendment, is just over seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. The impact to the sanitation fund is just over twelve thousand nine hundred dollars, and the impact to the ARPA fund is just over twenty-eight hundred dollars. So no, as I said, that's just over a half. So if you do the simple math, next year, we're looking at a budget impact of just approximately one point six million dollars for the adoption of this new pay plan. So turn it over. Answer any questions you may have, but appreciate your support.
We appreciate your hard work on this. It's one thing that's very important to this council is the support of our employees, police, fire, and all employees, including staff. We appreciate that hard work. Thank you very much. Questions regarding?
I'll make a motion if you're ready, mayor.
Go ahead. We can, we can have a second and then have the discussion if we need to.
All right. I'd second.
I'll make a motion. The first motion is for the resolution to consider the adoption of the pay plan, and that's the three areas that we, that Mr. Phillips discussed.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion is second to adopt the resolution as presented. Any discussion or questions regarding the resolution? It actually is the pay plan, so we're getting into the ordinance in a minute. All it's gonna do is like.
Give us the money.
Yeah, is give Mr. Phillips the money, which might be helpful. So any questions on the plan itself? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. The motion carried. Now, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'll make that motion to adopt the ordinance, which amends the general fund, the sanitation fund, the NSP funds.
Second.
All right. Motion is second. We adopt the ordinance. It amends all three of the funds. Is there, are there any questions about the ordinance? What we're doing here? Okay. No questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Okay. A matter of housekeeping. We needed a full vote, a unanimous vote, to adopt not the resolution, but the ordinance. And you all know that our rules state that when we don't have a full vote, we have two members absent tonight, obviously, we have to have a second and final reading. In order to do that in an efficient manner, I'd like to call a meeting for this Thursday morning, two days from now, at eight a.m. in this council chamber for the express purpose, the one, one agenda item of the adoption of the ordinance to amend the, amend the budget for twenty twenty-two for the new pay plan. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to go ahead and call that meeting. Is it?
Make that motion.
Second.
Thursday.
Okay. Motion is second. We call that meeting. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, notifying the press this time that I've called that meeting. So anyone who has an interest in getting up early Thursday morning and coming on by, we'll be here at eight o'clock. So the next item on the agenda today, reports from the mayor, and I have nothing else this evening. Under new business, the first item is a consideration of a Georgia Power underground easement on Lowell Fayetteville. There was actually not a person who was gonna present this one. Mr. Clark?
I can answer any questions.
Are there any questions? I guess there's a question to counsel. Any questions on what we're doing here?
You see the red lines that are on there, and that's the work we did that was associated with the roundabout when we had to put the utilities underground, and this is just some up above-ground little square boxes that are. If it gets near the Lowell Fayetteville Road project, we check it out very thoroughly to make sure there's no future conflicts.
Right. Okay. That was gonna be my question, to make sure there were no conflicts. Didn't wanna move this.
Don't believe there are.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, staff, regarding this issue? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. A motion is second. We grant the underground easement, George Power on Lowell Fayetteville Road. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carried. The next item is a consideration of a ground lease agreement between the City of Noonan and the Community Action for Improvement of Caffey. This is a ground lease extension that we've had on that building with this group for decades. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. We approve the lease as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Thank you, Mr. Craven.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda this evening is a consideration of a contract award for the project mill resurface and reclamation of various streets. This is the L-MIG program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. We adopt as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clark. The next item on the agenda, Mr. Phillips, this isn't gonna go as quickly as Mr. Craven.
We're gonna, a few of us will help you.
Consideration of entering into an agreement with a qualified firm to provide residential refuse and recycling service.
Mayor Brady, members of the council, I have our colleague, Mr. Norton, our Public Works Director here, as well as Mr. Phillips, to help us work through this item. As you likely recall, in February of twenty twenty-two, a special call meeting was held by this body to discuss our solid waste program. Following that directive, city staff put together requests for proposals, soliciting for competitive proposals from qualified firms to provide residential refuse and recycling services in accordance with those actions taken by this body at that called meeting in February. We issued that RFP in March of this same year. In mid to late April, we received questions and posted answers. They're included in your packet as it's related to the RFP as well as the program. Qualifications were due in May. We received proposals from three firms. We, and those firms are listed in your packet, beginning on page forty-nine. We extended an offer for an interview to all three firms. Two of those firms made themselves available for an interview. A team of city staff members, those from the city manager's office, as well as Public Works and Sanitation Department, interviewed those firms, and the selection committee is presenting a recommendation that the city council consider entering into an agreement with GFL for a term as listed on the next slide. It will be an initial term beginning in January of twenty twenty-three. We don't start on the Happy New Year holiday, so we start on January second for a five-year term with potential three subsequent two-year terms. Couple of those items listed on this slide ahead above us, I thought would be of interest to you. Please note, in accordance with that February work session, city staff will be managing the billing and administrative services will be no longer handled by the contractor. As you recall conversation, our last meeting, Mr. Phillips introduced an idea to bring that operation into the municipal complex. And then you guys gave us the go-ahead on that, and that's working its way through this, through the process. The agreement considers only residential and refuse recycling. This is not commercial, nor is it multifamily. Those are handled outside by other contractors. We talked about the term. The fourth bullet point down is glass items will again be reintroduced into the recycling program. Some of you may recall they have not been, and this contract glass will be returned as a, one of those items that can be recycled. This agreement does not include brush-in bulk items. The City of Noonan will manage that brush-in bulk as we do now currently. There are currently estimated twelve thousand five hundred customers, three hundred and eighty, what we call backdoor customers. As part of this contract, we envision enhanced reporting. So we have a real ideal on refuse tonnage, customer service requests, et cetera, et cetera, as well as enhanced promotion and education. So introductory, once the contract begins, as well as annual updates from the contractor on day of service, what can be recycled, what can, what goes in a can, what can, et cetera. Collection from City of Noonan Parks and Facilities. We have about a hundred plus or minus carts and cans, those decorative cans downtown, as well as those in some of our park facilities that are serviced as part of this contract. And a couple other points of reference, I think, are of note, that the downtown program will remain in place as it is. This contract does not contemplate that. That's a program that'll still be managed by Mr. Norton and his staff. And that the contractor in this new contract may incur penalties for missed pickups for twenty-five dollars each, if not rectified within twenty-four hours. And I'm sorry that that typeface went into the dark, but that's what it says. So there is that in there. Mr. Norton, Mr. Phillips, myself are prepared to answer questions, as well as members of GFL.
I have a question for GFL. I understand that this changes.
Could I get him to?
Oh, sure.
Identify himself with the record, please.
Yeah. Good evening, council. My name's Eric Bergen. I'm the Regional Vice President for GFL here in Georgia.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I understand that this changes some of it because of the collections and then the calls we start taking. But presently, what is, happens if somebody, garbage doesn't get picked up? How do they get their garbage picked up? If y'all miss it?
If we miss it, they can reach out by email, or they can call the center, or in some cases.
Does anybody ever answer the phone? I tried it three times one day. Fifteen minutes, ten minutes, twice. I had a friend of mine who lives a block or two away. Y'all missed him three times, and he's tried to call. So then I got on the webpage and emailed. Never get a response. So it just bothers me between now and then, it seems like we're in limbo as far as getting contact. And this past week, one week you miss my recycle, and next week you miss my garbage. If I hadn't talked to Mr. Phillips, I don't think y'all would've gotten it. So we supposed to bring it to y'all, or what?
No, sir. You, you bring up some very good points, and I understand, I one percent understand your frustration. We've done a couple things in the last few weeks to make sure that we're enhancing our service. We're moving all of our Fairburn customer service agents down to the Noonan Center that we have down here now. We've hired four more agents that are in training right now. It has. It's, it's been tough. Not gonna lie on this.
I understand that the, at the ground level, it's hard, but I think at the upper level, at least if you could call back and say, we can't pick you up. I'd rather you say that than never respond.
Exactly right. We do, we do send out phone blasts if we have the correct number, but you're exactly right. There are, there are parts in this last year and a half, two years, three years, that we failed. We're enhancing that by adding more people to the staff to make sure that we can handle the call volume and make sure that we're taking care of the customers the way they should be. One percent.
Okay. But, and I'm not, I'm not saying this in your defense at all, because I don't think what mess-ups y'all have can be defended, honestly. But you, you do answer in your call center and how many other municipalities?
We do. We answer, you know, pretty much all of South, all of South Georgia. Handles all the calls for all of the Atlanta market, from Stockbridge, Fairburn, over into Atlanta West. That's why we're combining our call center into one, so that all of our agents under one place, so that we can kind of like handle the call volume and move our reps around where they need to. We just put in a new phone system to give us the ability to do that. So we do handle call volume for all, all of the Atlanta metro. Yes, sir.
So we have one call center now?
We're gonna have one call center. We're closing our.
When is that gonna occur?
What's that?
Is that occurred now, or is it gonna?
We have, we have two call centers right now. I'm closing down the call, the call center in Fairburn. That's all being moved down here to Noonan, so it's all under one roof, so that we can manage the people better. And as call volumes come in at different locations, we can move our reps around with the new phone system so that if we're having more calls from one site, they can be moved over to the other site, and we can have one percent, one percent eyes on that at all times.
All right. So when do we expect that to be in place? You said you are. You didn't, so you have.
We are. We're in the process. The call center in Fairburn is just down on July first. All those reps will be moved down here. We currently have four more reps in training. It's, it's been a tough time, but you're correct. I, I understand your frustration, and we're fixing it.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
Yeah. How about that for a question?
If you wanna go to that slide, then allow me to finish, but council, if you have a question, I'm presented already, or?
No, I guess I was just gonna make a, I do have a question, but I think it'd be, I'm not sure if it's directed to you or to GFL. So the question is, as I got a couple comments today regarding the new contract, and I think we, we've discussed the idea that, okay, you have a container for recycling, you have a container for your garbage. I know on my street, within just several houses have baggy, have garbage bags outside of those containers. And it just helped me, I may have missed it, but how are we going to handle? Are they gonna handle, how are they gonna handle picking up what's beyond that, and how are we gonna transition from that?
So I'll, I'll take a stab at that, councilman. In the new contract, the new contract stipulates that all residential refuse and recycling must be contained in the container. If an individual routinely has excess bags, she or he will be asked to purchase another container and use that other container. There will be a grace period, because we're going kind of from a, if I may, free-for-all where we are now, to a more controlled environment. The new contract will try and dissuade customers from that. And if you need that, you'll have, you'll be required to have a second container. Part of this new contract will require and mandate certain technologies are used by the contractor, whereby if, in fact, they see a routine abuse, if you will, of the one container rule, there's photographs, they're, they're geolocated, we make them, we're made aware of that, that those people aren't told that day they need, but they're made aware that this can't continue. And over time, there, there will be a requirement that they have a second can.
Right. So from now until January first, that's kind of gonna remain the way it is. is, so. Pick up all, all right. So, and also a follow-up question with, what about those who would say, you know what? I put my garbage out once every other couple of weeks, and it feels like I'm paying more for my garbage and things like that? That's going to be a question that's going to pop up, so any suggestions on as to how to address that?
No, I, I don't know that you can run a program successfully.
No, I, I understand that, it's just going to be a.
Customers that get once a week or once every other week. And we consider that as a staff. We talked with our consultant, Abby Goldsmith, about the routine. And if you recall from the benchmarking study, we looked in other communities, Marietta, Albany, others of similar size and type of Newton. And most of what we saw because of the volume of customers and refuges being kind of derived by customers in town, it requires a once-a-week service.
Right.
You're right, there probably are outliers where an individual, maybe a retired person or single person that they know may not create enough waste at that time, but in order to run a program successfully, having a one-can-per-month fee per week service is kind of what we're recommending.
Yeah, I'm asking really kind of for myself as well, because that's kind of what I do.
I mean, you're not alone in that, but I have a lot more recycling than I have garbage. And I could, I could, it'll take me a month to fill up a garbage can, easily.
Yeah, so I had that conversation with myself today. That was how that came about.
If I may, I'll go through this.
Sure.
So on the left-hand side of the slide, you see our current pricing model. Some of the uniqueness to this is that second grouping, under what's, what we've been titled the City of Newton Service, you see there's a brush-in-bulk pickup and a host fee. Above that, in the GFL service, there's a billing fee. That disappears in the new structure. As you recall, in accordance with this group's directive, the City of Newton will be handling the billing and administration. So no longer will the contractor, in this case, GFL, be responsible for that. So as you look left side against the right side, the 2023 proposed pricing, under the GFL services, you see the ninety-five gallon cart and the recycling, and the price per month for that. As accordance, go down to the City of Newton Service, you see a brush-in-bulk pickup and a billing and admin fee. So that's where those, there's some of the nuanced difference. Of course, the numbers are different, as you see from where we are now to where we're going to be in 2023, if in fact the city council votes to enter into an agreement with GFL as recommended by staff. You see two on the right-hand side, as you continue through not only GFL service and the City of Newton Service, but the fee for, as Councilman Gilliam has, the second cart, second cart recycling, backdoor pickup, and backdoor pickup recycling. The other proposals from the three firms that submitted are in your packet as well. GFL was not only being recommended on price, but other items, but they are, for the record, the lowest price.
Any other questions from council?
I have a question. I, I mean, we all see that there's definitely a price increase of ten dollars and sixty-eight cents per month. I mean, that's a, that's a fairly steep increase, and I get it, it hits us all. The reason, and I'm trying to remember back to when we had our consultant, the reason for bringing the billing in-house, that actually was more cost-effective to the city, if I remember correctly.
Well, that, and I think to address some of what we've heard in customer service questions, we wanted to be able to handle the account setups, account management, and customer service of that. The contractor will be providing the service in and of itself. It wasn't necessarily a decision based on cost effectiveness.
Okay, so, so if somebody has a problem with a pickup, can they then come to our billing office as well? Okay, so they'll have multiple means of either contacting GFL directly or coming to us in a more person-to-person manner than just calling up here? So, okay, great.
Right. Any other questions? Staff, thank you very much. Have you left? We appreciate it very much. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion regarding?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, we approve the agreement between the City of Newton and GFL for refuge and recycling services moving forward in the year twenty-twenty, beginning of the year of January twenty-twenty-three. Any discussion or other question? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, motion carried. Thank you. Mr. Moody, you're up again with ARPA. The first one of the internal, is an internal request. Mr. ARPA, how are you, sir?
I'm great, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Fantastic. The first application that you have before you is from the police department. It is for replacement computers in the vehicles. These computers will be phased in over a period of three years, fifteen computers each year.
Yes, sir. You know, are there any questions, Ms. Moody? Police chief is also here. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to second to approve, any discussion?
I have a quick question. Is this like a fixed-price contract over the course of three years? Because we know how prices are going right now.
So we have spoken with the company that's going to provide us the computers, and it will be set. This, this amount will cover it during this time period.
Okay, great. And so in like year three, we're going to be getting the newest technology? We're not still be getting this year's technology in three years?
We've worked that out with them.
Awesome, great.
In the quote, yes, sir.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, have a motion to second. Any other questions on this item? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, and then the other storage vaults.
And the, yes, the, this request is for twenty-five thousand seven fifty-two thirty-six cents, and this will allow the department to purchase storage systems for the vehicles. This can be stored, used to store weapons and evidence.
All right.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, we approve. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, motion carried. Moody's still up for external ARPA request.
So this request is from the Housing Authority. This application is for an affordable housing project in the chalk-level neighborhood. This will assist families that were directly impacted by COVID and the tornado. This will build replacement homes and create a rent-to-own lease option for each homeowner. This project will take place in a qualified census tract as well.
Okay, and these are, based on what I've been reading in the agenda, these were uninsured?
That is, that is what is stated in the application, and as well, I would like to note too, the applicant has noted that there is a correction that needs to be made to one of the addresses. It is not to Johnson, it is actually for Johnson.
Okay, thank you. For that correction? Any other questions regarding this application?
Make a motion to approve with the correction of the address on Johnson Street.
Second.
Motion to second, we approve with the correction of the Johnson Street address. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, motion carried. Thank you, sir. The next item is a public hearing. This is a request by the owner, which is the City of Newton. To demolish a structure older than fifty years old. The property address is one hundred East Washington Street. You'll recall, call, we've had this discussion a couple of times already about what, how to move forward with this particular house we, we own. And now here is this, our public hearing to listen to the public about what we need to do here. Mr. Stevenson?
Good evening, mayor and council. Yes, before you is the, as you stated, the demolition of one hundred East Washington. It is a historic house by condition of age, but it is not listed on any historical maps as being historic or any other surveys that we have. And it has been properly advertised, and the city would like to demolish the property.
All right. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the issue? If you'll come forward and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Sandra Comfort. I own the residence next door at one oh two East Washington Street. I was in the city manager's office over a year ago, asking about the house on the corner. I was interested in purchasing it, and I was told at that time it was not being sold, that you all were going to put a house up, build a house on there that would be valued at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and how it was going to raise the value of my house. Last month, I spoke to Tracy Donovan. I was now told it's going to be affordable housing. I don't have a problem with affordable housing, I just want to know. I want to be able to make an informed decision if I should put my house up for sale now, because the value will drop, because the market's at the top right now. And do you know what the value of the house will be that will be replacing this?
I don't know that we have Ms. Donovan or staff. I don't know that we have a, have established a complete value, but Ms. Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor Brady. Essentially, what we're doing is we're working under the New York, the New York Urban Redevelopment Agency, and our program is, as we took this house down, is to build another one back. We are working on getting a design made. The New York Board has selected what they want the house to look like and what the plan to look like, so we're going to have to have that designed in. Once we do, we'll have a better idea of what the cost will be on the house itself.
So we don't know at this point?
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Phillips?
It's my understanding, even though the New York Board hasn't made a final decision, that the square footage of the house they will propose will be very similar, if not slightly larger than this particular house.
Yes, that is correct.
Architecturally, it will also be very similar to this house and the neighborhood. So I don't know that I know, I see a difference in the value between a renovation of the existing home, sell of the existing home versus what's going to be built. Obviously, I don't, I don't, I don't really want to speak to the market value of a home, but if we're going to be building a, what, a fourteen-hundred, fifteen-hundred square-foot home, three bedroom, two bath, but architectural capability, it's not a, not a real cheap home.
No, I'm saying, I won't off the top of my head put a value on that either, but I can.
Probably not too forty.
Right, yeah, exactly. So I'm sorry, but we don't have an, a value answer for you.
Is there an approximate timeframe when they should know the value of the house? Like I said, I just want to be able to make an informed decision whether to sell my house or, you know, where I can get the most money if I do sell it.
Right, again, an answer for a timeframe? Does anyone have that?
We have been waiting for you all to make the final decision on this, so that we can move forward with getting our designer to put the plan together, and that shouldn't take her, I think, that long. So probably within the next ninety days or so, we should have a, a good estimate on that.
Okay, thank you. And at that time, as soon as we have, the city manager knows how to contact you, and as soon, as soon as we have that value, we'll let you know what that is.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, we appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you. This is a public hearing on this issue of the demolition of the property at one hundred East Washington Street. Is anyone else here that would like to come forward and speak to the issue? Seeing no one move, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion from the council.
So. Second.
Motion to second, we grant the city permission to demolish the property at one hundred East Washington. Any discussion?
I have a question, mayor.
Yes.
How, how much do we have in this project right now, currently? I know we've talked a little bit, Ms. Tracy.
We have approximately right around fifty thousand, a lot less than fifty thousand in the project currently.
Hundred seventy.
Well, that.
Mr. Sears is referring to the cost of acquisition, which is a transportation-related project. I don't, I don't think, even though there is money that we've spent on the project, I, I don't think it's fair to actually capture that to the, to the cost of this project.
Well, remember, we bought the lot next door.
We certainly, that's a transportation-related project, yeah.
And also, we'll, we'll have costs of demolition, because we've got a contract to do that.
So there are costs that we're not going to recapture, and that is correct.
And, and my concern is, when we start adding up all this, plus a house of two hundred and fifty plus, is it going to come under? Will it come under affordable housing that we're trying to achieve? That's, that's my concern, and I'm just thinking, should we cut our losses, turn around and just sell this house, move on somewhere else and find another location?
But, George, let me explain what, say, we had to have the house for the build of the link.
Macintosh Trail.
Macintosh Trail.
I understand.
So, so that's, that cost was to the street, not to that project?
I, I agree, but I'm saying, we, we have fifty.
No, that fifty goes to that street, not to that house.
That's not true.
Mr. Alexander, I would offer to you, if we put the house on the market to sell, we'd have to do that through a bid process, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, and at that point, it would be, we, we have a bid that we accept or, or not, but I guarantee you that whoever buys this house will renovate it and rent it. So it's not affordable housing that has been bought by someone, which is our, which is our goal, and tearing it down and building a house there is have a homeownership. It'll be a rental property.
Again, my concern is, will someone be able to afford the price under affordable housing? That's my concern.
Don't we kind of get into weeds? Affordable housing is the buyer's going to step up, that's going to be able to afford the house, so therefore, is there, it's, that's affordable to that, that person. We're not setting a dollar value on what's affordable and what's not affordable. I think that's where we kind of get lost in affordable housing. If it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, if someone can afford two hundred and fifty thousand, therefore, it's affordable, but to, nobody's ever been able clear to, to, to buy in the dollar value of affordable. So is anybody here willing to define that? So I think we kind of get down into what's affordable, can somebody, somebody is going to buy that house?
And what, to support what you said, when you, when you're building a brand-new house at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so in today's market, there, you can't find that.
I think we're going to find that it's, that's going to be difficult to do. When all said and done.
Medium price right now is over, is around four hundred thousand, just in Keweenaw County alone, so price of lumber is high.
Are we still going to be trying to sell this at that price, somewhere around three fifty, four hundred? Is it going to be able to work into our program, what we're trying to achieve?
We're looking to try to hit somewhere between around that two fifty is what we're looking at on this. You know, again, until I have the design in place, and I've talked to them on estimates and so forth, I just don't have a fixed cost on that. But, I mean, that's, the goal of this program is to support homeownership, and, you know, if possible, have funding, is what we're trying to do for our program to move forward on the city-owned lots we have.
So would it sort of make sense if we go ahead and with the demolition, clean it up, at least at this point? And if we're, we're looking at building right now, we're building at the height of the market, too. I mean, we could wait a little while. There's no sense it has to be built right now, wait till the price of lumber comes down and other supplies come down, and it would make it more affordable.
Well, we, we've got to take it down, it's not habitable like it is.
So that's like, that's, so let's just focus on the demolition at this point.
Please, we, I mean, we, we've already had that discussion about whether or not we could rehab the house, and it was not affordable.
No, it's the money pit. Every time we get in there, we find additional things that have to be addressed.
That's why we're here discussing the demolition. So I do have a motion, I do have a second, I've closed the public hearing. Motion to second is to move forward with demolition of the property. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, motion carried. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a rezoning request. This is for information only. This is RZ twenty twenty-two oh five by George Rosenzweig, on behalf of Southbury Commercial Development LLC and STG Newton LLC, for point seven four one, plus or minus acres at eighteen Savannah Street. Request zoning from ILT to CBD, Central Businesses, for the purpose of operating a microbrewery. As I said, this is information only, be passed on to the planning commission, no action needed. The next item on the agenda is also a rezoning request for information only, RZ twenty twenty-two oh, 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 zero six by George Rosenzweig, thirty-five point four nine acres located at twenty thirty-seven Newton Crossing Bypass. by George Rosenzweig, 35.49 acres located at 2037 Noonan Crossing Bypass. Request zoning is RS15, medium density to RML, multifamily, lower-density district for the purpose of construction, 196 attached cottage apartments. This is information only, no action needed, be passed on to the planning commission. Under unfinished business, we have the first item is the status reports from various storm-damaged properties. Murray, how are you this evening?
Doing well, Mr. Mayor. Council, how's everybody?
Good.
I did want to provide a status update. We haven't done this in a while, primarily because there wasn't a lot to update, but there have been, over the last couple of months, 12 properties, storm-damaged properties that have come before you. Eleven of those did have a resolution passed, and one was dismissed because of the property hadn't done sufficient repairs. I won't go down every one because of time, but I certainly will try to answer any questions of any specific property you have. There have been three properties that have been demolished, 170 Lagrange Street, 70 Robinson Street, and as of yesterday, 66 Robinson Street. And of those three, only one required city personnel and city equipment to demolish. And then, of course, 22 Smith Street was dismissed because the council was satisfied with the amount of repairs that they had made. There are resolutions coming up, one at the end of this month, 178 Lagrange Street, that property was sold, the sale was completed and closed on May 26th. Wes Hauser is the new owner, and he is familiar with the resolution deadline, and he has agreed to have the house torn down by June 30th, and he has started his utility locates and disconnects, and so he's moving forward, and hopefully that will be done by June the 30th. Going into July, there are a couple of resolutions deadlines coming up, 157 Lagrange Street and 5 Mink Hollow. 157 Lagrange Street is being purchased by Mr. Hauser, that's due to close on Thursday, and he is wanting to tear down both houses at the same time or the same timeframe, and his plan is to build back properties at some point, but the resolution deadlines, or the resolution should be satisfied with those two properties with the demolition. And then, 5 Mink Hollow Court is coming up in July. That was a property that was, there was concern from council about the proper service for that. We were finally able to locate Mr. Williams, he had been living in Hawaii. He has since moved back in the area, he's living now in Fayetteville. He is aware of the deadline, and he plans to demolish the property by the resolution deadline, and then does plan to rebuild a multifamily unit there. It was a duplex when the storm damaged it, and he plans to build something comparable back. And then the other, the other properties are, deadlines coming up later in the year. But I'll be glad to answer any questions if you...
Any questions, Mr. Murray? Thank you, we appreciate your help on that. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of resolution to abandon unimproved right-of-way known as Highland Avenue. This is a continuation of the discussion we had at one of our last agenda items.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council, good evening. Real quickly to reiterate, you'll see before you a couple of slides. What we've tried to do is kind of reillustrate the area in question. This is an area of land where if you drove by it, you wouldn't know it's right-of-way. It's heavily wooded, it's been in place for a number of years. This survey, which was commissioned by one of the property owners, Mr. Avery, shows the area of impact is in a rectangle situation, it's about 30 feet wide on both ends, roughly 150 feet long. If you go to the next slide, please, Megan. Try to give you an aerial view of kind of the area of impact. You'll see, in the kind of the yellow gold hatched area is roughly the area of right-of-way we're talking about. Mr. Avery's property is to the north of this impacted area, and the Mason property is to the south. It abuts the Housing Authority to the west, east, west. And the other property to the east is Barron Court. If you do the next slide, please, Megan. If I'm on Barron Court, I'm at ground level, and I'm looking directly at the front of what would have been Highland Avenue. You can see the area indicated by the two blue arrows of where the ends are of the road. So again, this is coming back to you, I know that last meeting you heard from the representatives of the property owners, I think they're both here this evening, to continue that discussion. Ultimately, it's a question of whether you wish to subdivide half to either side or give one to the other.
That's correct. We appreciate that, thank you. Mr. and Ms. Woodruff are here, and Mr. Avery is, I believe, is also here this evening. I'd like for either Mr. and Ms. Woodruff to come forward first, and I have a question for you, and the council may have some other questions. We heard from you last time about your use of the property through the years and those type of things, so we don't need to, you don't need to repeat yourself for any particular reason, but I have a question. Do you want half of this right-of-way?
We definitely want half, the Lodge definitely wants half of the right-of-way.
Okay.
But the Lodge had asked, and you guys granted, if you go back to the next, to the last meeting, one thing that we requested before the split occurred was that we had the opportunity in ample time to have a complete survey done on the Lodge property, because as we discussed previously, this property has been there since the 1960s, and as the City of Noonan has abandoned property...
This is, ma'am, I'm sorry, but this is what you told us last time, so we don't need to...
Right, and so, but you gave, you said June or July, so we immediately called Surveyor and got them on the schedule. They met with a representative of the Lodge this last Monday, and we're, you know, we've, if you look at the minutes, you said you would give us ample time, and the ample time wasn't given, and I have a text from the Surveyor that the meeting went, because it's not a cut-and-dry survey because of the different aspects of it. This is from Gary Harbuck, and I asked him, he met with Mr. Carlton, which is a Lodge member, on last Monday, and he needed to get a fill for what he was looking for. He's got it to be scheduled out, to start staking it out on June the 20th, and his last text to me today at 10:43 was, "Hi Crystal, after meeting onsite with Carlton, we have scheduled the survey for Monday, June the 20th. Once the fieldwork has been complete, then we will begin drawing the plat. Due to the complexity of the survey, it could be sometime in July before a final plat is complete," but, thank you, Mr., thank you, Gary Harbuck. So what we had asked for before anything was divided was ample time to get a survey. You guys granted that. And then, it, a motion, everything, nothing was opposed, we left, and then after we left, apparently there was further discussion about it, and then my husband gets a thing saying, okay, well, they're going to decide on it on this meeting. That's not ample time in our, in our world right now, with everybody backed up. So all we're asking for, we were expecting that this was going to be put off until the July meeting, which would have given us ample time. We just want to make sure that any, that all the property, that none of this property is really a part of the Mason property. And I think that it's only fair that we're able to either approve that or disapprove that.
Thank you for your comments, we appreciate that. I have a question for Mr. Sears. Was this property not surveyed?
Yes.
It is surveyed.
Just, well, their property's been surveyed over the years, but what Gaskins did, Chris Robertson did, was survey the unabandoned right-of-way.
Right.
Put pins in, and he didn't survey their property, except the line for the unabandoned, unabandoned part of the road. So yes, it has been surveyed, it's been staked and been flagged, and it's been surveyed all four corners of the whole, plus the center line.
That's correct. So what we're discussing here tonight is not what the survey of the Lodge is, but the survey of this right-of-way that we're deciding on whether or not we're going to split in half, or give to one party or to the other. The Lodge has already stated that they want it, that they want half of that property, correct? I mean, that's what you said a minute ago. So I think it's important that if you're having your property surveyed, and we adopt the resolution tonight, granting you half of this property, that you can go ahead and get that Surveyor who's going to come out and do your survey for your Lodge to include this half that the resolution would, would provide to you this evening, if that's the resolution that we adopt. Otherwise, you're going to have a survey of your Lodge that doesn't include this property.
The thing about it is, though, is that we want to make sure that the survey that was done is correct, and then one way to show that and to prove that is to have our own survey done of the property that's there. And one thing that was also brought up by a few other Lodge members is, why is it that the only choice is we get, they get half, or he gets all? Why doesn't the Lodge have the opportunity to have it all?
Mr. Sears, that's a legal question.
Well, I would say, if Mr. Avery didn't want his half, then you could have it. But Mr. Avery wants his half, he's the one that introduced this, so the statute says that it goes to the adjoining property owners who request it.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if you decide you don't want it, then Mr. Avery could have it all.
No, they definitely want it, but the Lodge members, because of the complexity and over the years, they, they want their own survey done because they want to make sure that that survey is correct.
Mr. Sears, is there any reason for us to believe that Gaskins has provided us with an erroneous survey?
This company and Christopher Brothers has done much work for the City of Noonan as a client over the years. In this particular instance, the client is Mr. Avery, although it's surveying city property. So based upon the way, if you look at the survey on D, example D to one of your things that shows the half, it does line up directly with the remainder of the closed portion that was closed in 1965, where half was given to the Masonic Lodge and the other half given to the authority. So if you line that up, then the pin that is shown there at the south, well, that would be the southeast corner of Highland Avenue, is the pin found for the Masonic Lodge property at that point.
Okay.
So to answer the question, no, there's not...
So the pin would not have moved over all these years, obviously.
It should not have, no.
Okay, I'd like to recommend to the council that we go ahead and adopt the resolution that would allow us to split the property between the two adjoining property owners, if there's a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion to second, any further discussion?
Just so that y'all know, with the Lodge, you can still do your survey, correct? I mean, there's no, no thing saying they still can't do the survey, so you can still do your survey since you have it scheduled.
And if we determine that there is a conflict, what do we do then? We just lose again?
Well, there won't be a conflict on this particular, the only conflict that I would see would be between Noonan and...
Well, see, the confusion comes from is when our surveyor started looking into different actions over the years, there is, and from other Lodge members that have been Lodge members for 50 years, there was something else that happened after 1965. We're talking about, this is 2022. So that there are Lodge members that have been there that feel as if that possibly a portion of this was already, you know, adopted or absorbed into the property.
So...
Mr. Sears, we have any record of that?
The only thing I found was the '65 resolution.
You found the what?
'65 resolution. Now, it was a little misleading, I guess, to the point because it said to the adjoining property owners, but it referenced the water and light plat for this to the south. So argumentatively, you could say that the south has, has already been abandoned to be deeded to them back in '65 in that survey, and the top half should have been deeded to the, whoever owned the Avery property at that time.
Which is essentially what we're doing now.
Which is essentially what you're doing now, correct.
So I've got a question probably for you, Mr. Sears. If their surveyor finds a discrepancy with the other survey, how is that resolved? What's the...
Between the surveys.
Pardon?
Between the surveys.
Between the two surveys?
Correct.
If there's a discrepancy between the two...
Between the two surveyors.
It's a common process, happens every time a survey is, potentially.
Their survey would call Gaskins.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then if...
And we can furnish, we can furnish the surveyor with all the surveys that, that we found of record.
Sure.
And if they, and if the two surveyors get together and they do find a conflict and they agree that there's a conflict, then what do we do? Do we put a motion before you guys and say, okay, this is wrong?
No, the city won't have any other interest, that'll be between you and Mr. Avery.
Okay, so we have to end up suing somebody? All right, that's just great.
So we have a motion to second. Any other questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried, thank you. This next item on the agenda is a public hearing, this is a rezoning request, RZ 202203 by Sheriff McWilliams for .22 acres located at 14 Lee Street, from OI-1 Low Density Office and Institutional to RU-1 Urban Residential District Historical and Infield, consideration of ordinance. This is a public hearing. Ms. Dunham, how are you again?
Doing well, thank you very much. So the request here is to allow the house, which is currently a non-conforming use in an OI-1, to be zoned to a residential use, to allow it to be conforming and to allow for additional construction on the rear of the house, which they cannot do right now because it is a non-conforming use. Staff has completed an assessment on each of the eight required standards, and I'll give a quick summary of each. Staff felt the proposed use would be suitable in view of zoning and development of the adjacent and nearby properties, since the proposed use is not changing from its current use of the house, and there's a mixture of uses and zoning designations in the area. However, all of them are currently being used as residences. In terms of adverse impact on adjacent and nearby properties, again, there's not going to be any because the use is not changing. Could it be used as currently zoned? A single-family resident, as I previously stated, is not permitted in OI-1, so the property could be used but would continue to have a non-conforming status. Would the project cause an excessive or burdened use of public facilities? Again, there's not going to be any greater impact since it's not changing in use. In terms of the comprehensive plan, we show the property as future historic neighborhood, and this use would be compatible with the designation RUI. A single-family home would also be consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed zoning. Would the proposed use be supported or new change in conditions not anticipated by the comprehensive plan? Again, you all updated your plan in 2021, and you gave this property a future historic neighborhood designation, so there aren't any changes that have been discussed or considered since that update. Staff does feel this request shows a reasonable balance between the promotion of the public health, safety, morality, or general welfare and the right to unrestricted use of property as there's no change in use. The rezoning will make the structure conforming, there will be no impact on service provision, and it is consistent with our comprehensive plan. So therefore, we felt that in eight out of all eight standards, at their May 10th meeting, the planning commission held a public hearing and voted unanimously to recommend this rezoning, and they had no conditions with that.
Thank you for your report, we appreciate that very much. This is an opportunity for the applicant to come forward, Ms. Williams, I think is here, McWilliams is here this evening. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Anything to say in your behalf?
No, I'm just wanting to add an addition on to my house, and this rezoning is necessary to make that step, so that's the only reason I'm trying to even rezon my house, so...
Appreciate you being here this evening. This is a public hearing, this is an opportunity for anyone opposed to this application for rezoning to come forward and speak. Anyone here opposed to the rezoning application at 14 Lee Street, this is your opportunity to come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask the council for a motion to accept the report and recommendation from the planning commission.
So moved.
Motion is... Is there a second? Motion to second to accept the report and recommendation from the planning commission. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The next item would be consideration of the ordinance to rezone the property, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, we adopt the ordinance as presented to rezone the property at 14 Lee Street, RUI. Any discussion?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
It seems like this has come up before where there's been some non-conforming zoning. How long is this property specifically? Do we know how long it's been the OI and not residentially zoned?
There's no...
This isn't something that got changed during one of our zoning things?
It's been a residence as far as I think it's been built, I don't know how the whole zoning process works.
I just want to make sure this isn't other properties also that are, it seems like they pop up everywhere.
Zoning happened in the 70s, and that property was built in the 40s or 50s.
I know back in 2000, when you all updated and went to the new zoning designations, OI-1 was one of them, and this property was zoned that way at that point.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? I'll call the question, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Will you put this on our next agenda for a second final reading?
Second reading.
Thank you, Ms. McWilliams, appreciate you being here this evening. The next is also a public hearing, this is a rezoning request, RZ 202202 by Alice Cornigi, Cornijo, for DUI School of Coweta, Point Inc., .27 acre... for DUI School of Calweda, Point Inc., point 27 acres located at 39 Main Street from RU-7, a single-family residential district to CGN, and also a consideration of the ordinance. Ms. Dunham?
Yes, thank you. They are asking for a rezoning here to go to CGN for the purpose of housing a counseling office. The site is currently occupied by a single-family home and the applicant will be contacting the building department regarding any modifications that have to be made in order to change the use from a residence to an office. Staff has, again, completed an assessment of each of the eight required standards and I'll give a quick summary of each. The property is located between RU-7 property to the east and CGN property to the west. There are numerous uses in the area, including residences, two churches, a DUI school, and a multi-tenant commercial building. Staff felt the proposed use would be suitable in view of zoning and development of adjacent and nearby property if it was limited to an office use only, which would serve as a good transition between the commercial and residential properties. CGN does permit some pretty intense uses. So the condition would allow them to have future protection to the existing residences. In addition, the applicant indicated that they would be using the existing home, which staff feels would also be, should be a condition as it would maintain the historic character of that neighborhood. In terms of adverse impact on adjacent or nearby property, we feel it would be minimal. The applicant indicated there'd only be a couple of counselors on the site who will meet with individuals both in person and via teleconference. There may be some additional traffic, but not enough to impact usability of the neighboring properties. And in addition, the hours of operation are anticipated to be 10:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Monday through Friday. And then that should work well with neighboring property owners as well. Staff did receive an email from one individual who owned the property and leases it at 42 Main Street, who was concerned about the impact of commercial business on an existing resident. That's in your packet. And we also have a couple of petitions that were included in there as well in favor of the request. Could it be used as currently zoned? Yes, it could. It is zone residential and could continue to be used as a single-family home. Was the project causing excessive or burdensome use of public facilities? Staff feels impact on service would be minor. There will be less impact on schools, again, because it's not a resident, and very little on water, sewer, police, fire, et cetera. Traffic increase would also be minimal. In terms of the comprehensive plan, the future land use map shows this property to be built community. These are areas that have been developed with a variety of residential and non-residential uses that provide goods and services to the surrounding neighborhood and staff does feel it would be consistent with the comp plan. The applicant is proposing an office use, so that also would be consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed zoning. Would the proposed use be supported by new or changing conditions not anticipated by the comprehensive plan? Again, you all just changed this in October of 2021. And so there haven't been any new or changing conditions that have been discussed since that time. In reviewing the, because staff does, would be concerned with a blanket CGN zoning. However, staff does feel limiting it to an office use only and requiring them to use the existing home would both maintain the character and provide a transition between the residential and commercial properties. Therefore, staff does feel the project shows a reasonable balance between the promotion of the public health, safety, morality, and general welfare and the right to unrestricted use of property. So in summary, staff found that developments met seven of the eight standards. So at their May 10th meeting, planning commission held a public hearing and unanimously recommended approving the rezoning request, but with the following conditions. Instead of it going to CGN, they suggested that the property be rezoned to OI-1. That would allow it to have a CGN to the west side. Then it would be OI-1 and then go to the residential. They felt that was a better transition. And that the uses would be limited to office and counseling uses only. That the business would be located in the existing house currently on the property. That all parking would be located in the side and rear yards. And that the hours of operation would be limited between 8 a.m. and 6 p.m. And that's the report of the planning commission.
Thank you for your report. We appreciate that very much. This is a public hearing on this property for rezoning application located at 39 Main Street. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in support of the application? Who'll come forward and state your name, please?
Good evening, I'm S. William Kelly. I represent the owner, Alice Cornejo, who's right here. I just wanted to add to the information your staff has given, which was very good, and hope that the council and the mayor accept what she has stated. Just wanted to put in there information concerning that establishment of the business originally in 2013 as a DUI in counseling. And the add that it will provide more counseling and the need now today is for mental counseling and that operation will help in that area. Benefits will add more jobs, affordable counseling, availability to non-English speaking individuals, mental health services, and provide help locations and services in locations. Also to act as a referral for family matters and counseling and help. We appreciate the time and we hope that you decide and grant this rezoning.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any questions to Mr. Kelly? All right. This would also be an opportunity for anyone who is in opposition of this rezoning request to come forward. Anyone in opposition of the rezoning request located at 34, I'm sorry, 39 Main Street? All right, seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion from the council to adopt the report and recommendation from the planning commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt the report and recommendation from the planning commission. Any discussion?
I have a question, probably for Mr. Kelly. I was just thinking about this is, it's kind of getting into some, or some commercial sprawl going on in a residential area. You said you're going to have several counselors there plus patients. Does this have adequate parking and how are you going to address the parking in this area?
We have admitted that the council, at the planning commission, that we would provide wet services or parking that is designated to utilize this property. We have existing parking in the building next door. And it's just a matter of knocking down the fence and they could utilize that parking as well. But if we need to add additional, we are open to that.
Okay. Ma'am, did you have a?
If you'll come forward and identify yourself, please.
My name is Alice Cornajo. And yeah, I'm the licensed professional counselor. And yeah, that's, I'm the petitioner for this matter. And what I was saying is that we actually said that we were going to do anything that, you know, will go accordance to what is need, to make this place, you know, comfortable for the clientele. And I think that they already have a plan or they already anticipate some things. And, and we are totally in a, I mean, agree with that.
I ride by this location several times a week and I, I think the change would do the area good, quite frankly. Appreciate it.
I have a question about this only. Don't we say that with the planning commission first?
Yes, we did.
Didn't we talk about?
Yes, I've got a motion is second to accept the recommendation and report. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Now, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'll so moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. We adopt the ordinance for rezoning.
Now, I have a question. Okay. We've originally requested CGN and then this is going to be, what, OI-1 or whatever is OI-1? So what's, what's going to make the, is it going to make a difference to them? Because that's different from what they requested.
We were looking at the CGN with limiting it to just the office uses only for counseling. Planning commission felt that the OI-1 being in place instead of the CGN, if someone down the line wanted to request that, that the OI-1 wouldn't continue the CGN. It would allow it to be less intense as that goes towards a residential property.
So is that going to fit the applicant's request?
Yes, she could still do her office and counseling work in that. That is correct.
I have a question, Mayor.
Oh, certainly.
What is the parking requirements if we rezone this to OI-1? What are their parking requirements?
It's going to be the same with OI-1 or CGN. It's all based on uses. And so it'd be like, is it one per 300, two, one per 250 square feet?
Okay. So they, they can't say, well, we're going to use the parking next door to suffice for the parking for the OI.
They could only do up to 50% if they did for the office use. They could have a shared agreement where the customers there would do that. But they're planning on putting the office, the spaces that they need onsite there. They have a rear area they can put it in as well as the side when they have ADA requirements.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have, like, one other question, potentially for the applicant, is you've had a DUI school there. It's been fine, as far as I know. Converting or adding on another property and expanding services to mental health issues and stuff like that. Have you spoken at all with any of the residents around there? And I don't know the makeup, the demographics, the, there, the children and stuff like that. They feel secure, safe having that type of counseling, potentially with children, with that right there next door?
Yes, we made actually a survey, a petition, and people signed it right away. They were very excited about that.
Actually part of our package, I believe. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. If you'll put this item on our agenda for a second final reading. The next item on the agenda, the last item on our agenda this evening, is the applicant's request for us to continue, the continuation of the, the public hearing from last month to July the 12th meeting 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. We grant the request to continue the item on V on this agenda to our July 12th, 2022 meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carried, thank you. We don't have anything under visitors this evening, but I do have one person who has checked the list that they wanted to bring something forward to the council. Ms. Melson, I believe? Is she here? How are you today?
Good evening, I'm fine, thank you.
State your name for the record.
Jeannie Melson.
All right.
Okay. I'm here because I want to address getting a tree up from directly in front of my property. And the reason I came to the council to address it is because the tree fell into the street the night of the hurricane. And the people that came around to clean up the street picked the tree up and put it on the sidewalk. And because they had to fix the lights and they had to clear the street. So when I came back later to the house, my house, they had thrown this tree over into the vacant lot right in front of my house. So now that vacant lot, the tree is ISO. I have to look out my window every day and see it. I thought when they came around getting up the debris, that they would get up that tree, but they did not. So I've been to the city manager's office. They told me that it was owned by the radio station. But now I find out that the radio station doesn't own it. I was told I would get a call from the enforcer, the code enforcer. I have not gotten that call. The tree is still there. I'm the only one on my street with a tree, a dead tree directly in front of me. All the other trees have been cleaned up. So I want to know what procedure do I take to get that tree up from in front of my house?
Mr. Phillips, do you have comment on this?
I believe we're talking about in front of WCOH's radio station, correct?
Right.
Mr. Norton, can you maybe, are you aware of that situation? I know that we have discussed the radio station itself. So I'm not aware of a tree that's actually in the right-of-way. I know there are several trees in the property owned by the radio station. Mr. Norton, do you have any information?
That's correct. I, I have actually asked code enforcement to try to reach out to that property owner to, to start the conversation of cleaning it up. But I'm not aware of this particular tree of what we're talking about.
Well, can we go ahead?
Yes, sir. I've been by that property. I drove by. It is so overgrown, you have to get right up close. But you can see that tree that's, that what Ms. Melson is talking about. And it's very close to the street, but it, you can't see it because it's, there's just so much.
I haven't seen the individual tree. I'm aware of the property and the overall condition of the property because the radio station, I think, owns a few acres there and there is substantial tree damage on, on the property. I mean, if it's a city right-of-way tree, that's not an issue for us. We'll be happy to get it tomorrow. But if it's a tree that's not on the right-of-way, we, we cannot get it. And, you know, this, we have not had discussions with this particular body on how we want to pursue. We have a lot of properties in the city that still have tree damage. We've talked about a potential ARPA grant program that we can assist our property owners in cleaning up. But at this point in time, we've not talked and I don't know if we want to pursue code enforcement actions because it would be more than just this one particular property. There's a lot of properties that still have tree debris damage from the tornado. Again, if it's a city right-of-way tree, we'll make it be gone tomorrow. But if it's a tree that's actually on the radio station, we've got another process that we've got to.
Can we determine that tomorrow and let's find out?
Absolutely. If it's, there's not much right-of-way. I mean, obviously we'll be able to see.
Sure.
There's a sidewalk there and typically the right-of-way is, you know, twelve, a couple of feet behind the sidewalk it must. And if there's a tree something there, it's in the right-of-way.
Correct.
But if it's.
And if, I have a question. If it's, what happens if the city can't get it up? What, what happens to that tree that's directly in front of my eyes every day?
We will contact the property owner and see if they will voluntarily come and get the tree up.
Okay, and if they don't?
Then, as Mr. Phillips just said, we don't have a program at this time to go onto private property to remove trees. We, we have not started that process, process, process at this time. What we've been doing is focusing on the homes and trying to get those homes back in, back into livable shape where we can. But we haven't addressed the issue of downed trees on private property.
The only problem I have is that someone put the tree over there. That's the problem I'm having. They moved it out the street and put it over on that property.
Okay. Ms. Alzander?
Yes, sir, thank you. Ms. Melson, I want to make sure we're all on the same page. You're, what you're talking about is just one tree, not the entire lot to be cleaned up.
I don't care if the whole lot doesn't get fixed up. That's, I want that one tree right out from, in my eyesight. Because they put it there. Whoever was cleaning up, put the tree in that lot right there like that.
Ms. Phillips, we'll look at that tomorrow, determine.
Yeah, Mr. Norton, look at it, absolutely.
Right, thank you.
And the tree now, other trees are starting to grow up around it. But my problem is I'm afraid that snakes are going to come from over there into my property. And I'm, I don't want that. I don't want that. And people have started to throw trash over there.
Okay. We appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any off agenda item? We do have an E this evening for executive session. Ms. Alzander?
Yes, sir. I move that we now enter into closed session as allowed by OCGA 50-14-4 and pursuant to advice by the city attorney for the purpose of discussing legal and real estate and that we, in open session, adopt a resolution authorizing a director and mayor or presiding officer to execute an affidavit in compliance with OCGA 50-14-4 and that this body ratify the actions of the council taken in closed session and confirm that the subject matters of the closed session were within exemption permitted by the open meetings law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. We go into executive session for real estate and legal. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're in executive session.